Okay.
The time is now twelve P M on Friday, November twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. This is a hearing for public comment on a proposed rule amending rules relating to the request for review process in the clerical error administrative review process. I am Timothy Burn of the Department of Finance Office of Legal Affairs. This is a hearing for public comment only. No comments will be offered by members of the Department of Finance. I ask that anyone who comments to please start by identifying yourself and the organization you represent before making your comments. You may speak for up to three minutes. We will start with those who have registered to speak, after which we will ask if anyone who did not register would like to speak. I ask that all who have joined to mute their mics until they are called. Thank you. To start, um, is Peter Blonde present?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you represent anyone?
Uh, I, we do have clients that have pending matters with the Department of Finance as well as the Task Commission and the New York City Law Department.
Thank you. And you may begin.
Thank you. The proposed changes to the New York City Department of Finance, R F R and C E R programs are the most anti-taxpayer clauses I have encountered during my twenty seven year legal career. That is focused solely on tax searchery matters. In two thousand and sixteen, former Commissioner Jacques Gihah understood D O S mission statement. And that he worked for and represented all New York City taxpayers fairly and equally. The U S mission, particularly in areas regarding assessments and the corresponding taxes they create for the city's coffers, is to make corrections where appropriate. For these reasons, just eight years ago, former Commissioner Gihah enacted the very provisions we are here to defend. And demand remain in place, not only for our clients, but for all New York City taxpayers. As of now, the U S website states, our mission is to administer the tax and revenue laws of the city fairly, efficiently, and transparently. To instill public confidence and encourage compliance while providing exceptional customer service. With that mission statement apparently lost in translation, your proposal will accomplish the following. Decimate taxpayer refund period for corrections of error from six years, as is the case in every other jurisdiction in the state of present, to only three. It eliminates taxpayer rights to a New York City Task Commission hearing by merely seeking the redress of the city's own error with D O F. Third, without a clear grandfather clause, all pending C E Rs right to existing rules as of two thousand and sixteen will be forfeited. Despite waiting for years in many cases, just for D O S response. This likely means hundreds, if not thousands, of New York City taxpayers will have their pending claims retroactively dismissed or receive less than half of what was legally available despite their timely filing. In the interim, other taxpayers have had their matters redressed, whether they were filed before or after other pending cases. Without an appropriate grandfather clause, D O F has engaged in unequal treatment under the law. Equally distressing to New York City taxpayers should be D O F's tone in this rather harsh betrayal. How dare D O F suggest taxpayers that have been overcharged for decades in some instances are receiving some sort of windfall by obtaining a six-year refund for inappropriate assessed values based on errors like square footage or unit counts. In the law and in any common sense setting, we call that being made whole. In Nassau County, not only do taxpayers receive the six-year legally appropriate look back period, but the refund also comes with interest. D O F fixing egregious errors and refunding overpayments is your current duty. Yet you are attempting to wash your hands of that responsibility in the name of money and convenience. Many, if not most of these requests are on behalf of residential property owners in classes one and two. These are predominantly voters and you are abandoning their legitimate claims for correction pursuant to existing state law and case law. I represent a cooperative apartment building that is still waiting for a D O F response for approximately one year. Despite D O F having performed a field inspection in July, the correction of error requested is for six years. That matter, along with many others, will be seen the inside of a courtroom should these rules move forward as is. It is also fair to wonder, in light of the continuing Tenny lawsuit, why so many public officials acknowledge that New York City's assessment system is fraught with inequities, yet D O F is acting as if there are no legitimate ones to review. D O F owes an apology to New York City taxpayers, and these proposals should be incinerated in the name of decency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, next is Alexis Tenor present?
Yes.
As a reminder, time limit of about three minutes. You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm Alexis Tenor of Tenor Consulting Services. Our firm is a tax consulting firm assisting real property owners with tax and valuation matters. As a firm representing a broad swath of commercial and residential owners, we are deeply concerned with the repercussions of the proposed changes to the request for review process and the clerical error administrative review process. The proposed amendments will significantly alter both the scope of eligible errors and the process by which property owners may address those errors. While finance's purported goal is to streamline operations and prevent repeated challenges across various forums. The proposed amendments taken in their totality will serve to render the clerical error process meaningless. Forcing owners to pursue litigation to address legitimate errors. While the goal of transparency is a laudable one, we are concerned that the implementation of these changes will have the practical results of increased ambiguity and a perhaps unintended departure from fairness for the taxpayer and accuracy for the Department of Finance. In my remaining time, I will outline the five major issues we foresee if the proposed rules are adopted in their current form. Number one, the introduction of a requirement that a taxpayer receives no tax commission determination effectively forces taxpayers to forego tax commission hearings in order to pursue clerical error corrections. If the grounds for a clerical error correction and a tax commission appeal are wholly distinct. Such interplay seems to have no rationale other than to bar taxpayers from pursuing an appeal. Number two, a proposed elimination of the enumerated grounds for clerical error corrections hurts both taxpayers and the Department of Finance. Eliminating this section and replacing it with correcting only those errors that are purely ministerial in nature does not improve clarity. Rather, the change creates significant questions as to what comprises a legitimate basis for a clerical error correction. This change seems completely contrary to the purported rationale. Third, the proposed requirement that discrepancies are resolved based solely on finance's own records removes essential sources of information from finance's consideration. Fourth, the proposed limitation restricting current owner's ability to challenge prior period errors may have significant prejudicial effect in certain contexts where historical assessments are the basis for future exemptions or abatements. And last, the proposal to shorten the window to file a clerical error correction precludes the possibility of resolving many potential errors. In the comments submitted by our firm, we have provided examples of cases where a clerical error request was necessary and would now be foreclosed should these amendments be adopted. In closing, we sincerely hope that the Department of Finance will reconsider these changes. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. I also request once again that any who are not speaking to please mute your mics. Thank you. Oh, Alexis, I'm sorry if I missed it, but was there anyone in particular you were representing besides your clients, any group or firm?
Uh, Tenor Consulting Services is our firm.
Thank you. Uh, next is Yuri Gott-Galik present? G E Y L I K. Yuri, are you present? Okay, we will return to them later. Benjamin M. Williams, are you present?
Yes.
The floor is yours. As a reminder, about three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am a member of the law firm Rosenberg and Estes and the head of the Property Tax Department. I'm a member of the New York City Bar Association and the co-chair of the New York State Bar Association Tax Searchiary Committees. I represent hundreds of New York City property taxpayers. I only want one thing for my clients, a fair property tax. I don't want them to pay a penny more than what's fair. What's so wrong with the Department of Finance's current error correction process, which was first revamped almost a decade ago? That D O F now wants to amend it? Were people abusing it? If that's the trigger for this proposed amendment, then I encourage you to direct your efforts in stopping that abuse and stopping that only. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Review as many legitimate requests for error correction as possible. Don't try to limit all requests for error correction. The current process was already hit or miss when it came to tax relief. Sometimes D O F was very fair and did the right thing. Other times, they inexplicably refuse to. For example, I have a client that has a back alley to an adjacent building of theirs. Oddly, D O F said the alley had twenty thousand square feet of building on it. I urged the assessor. I sent photographs. I said stroll on by the alley one day and see that there is no building on it. I asked the assessor to please remove the building value from your assessment. The assessor initially refused to do it. He wouldn't even walk by the alley citing COVID hurt reasons. I had, even though it was outdoors, I had to file multiple requests. And finally, after three years, the Department of Finance finally removed the building value and refunded the hundreds of thousands of dollars my tech, my client had to pay during that period. My client shouldn't have had to wait that long. Under the proposed rules, if they had been in place as they're proposed, he would likely have lost his property in a tax lien foreclosure sale. Another example, three years now, I've been waiting for the Department of Finance to fix a clerical error. A client owns building A and B. They put the total building area of A plus B on building A's lot. And building B has its area too, so that's overstating the total area. And D O F is, we're still waiting for their review. Under the current rules, nothing would happen. And the taxpayer would pay way too much. I've saved over three million dollars in property taxes for co-ops and condos with over a hundred and fifty apartments in New York City. These are people who vote. They were paying too much tax due to Department of Finance's errors. That's not fair. Let's be compassionate to our neighbors. We should applaud these tax savings, not fight them and make it more difficult. We should make it easier for them. We should expand the period. We should expand the possibilities of how people can protest and use the error correction process to fix their assessments and get tax fairness. We should take down the obstacles. Not put up more obstacles.
Thank you.
Is that three minutes? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next is Scott Goldberg present?
Yes, I am.
The floor is yours. As a reminder, about three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Goldberg. I am a partner in the law firm of Goldberg and Boker. And for more than twenty years, I've been representing property owners in New York City on all types of real property tax issues. I'm going to primarily focus on the amendments to the clerical error rule. The proposed rule, as, as everyone has already echoed, is completely anti-taxpayer. The Department of Finance is, is losing sight of its mandate to properly and fairly tax property owners so that they don't pay too much and they don't pay too little. This proposed amendment to the clerical error rule will eliminate many adjustments that ought to be made. By proposing a shortened statute of limitations, the proposed amendment is doing two things. First, the language in the proposal says that you will adjust the current year or the two preceding years. I don't even know if it's intentional that you use, used the disjunctive as opposed to the conjunctive. Seems to indicate you can either complain about the current year or the two preceding years. It doesn't even seem that you can actually contest three years. So that, that's one drafting problem. The other problem is the Department of Finance does not have the legal right to change a statute of limitations. It's up to the city council or possibly the state legislature that could do so, not the Department of Finance. So such a proposal is frankly illegal. The Court of Appeals in a case, a matter of Garth, first Board of Assessors, explains how the Department of Finance should look at its role in assessing taxpayers. And not just, not just the Department of Finance, but all taxing authorities in New York State. And they quote this two thousand and nine decision. The law regarding real property assessment proceedings is remedial in character and should be liberally construed to, to the end that taxpayers' rights to have its assessments reviewed, reviewed should not be defeated by a technicality. That's exactly what this proposed amendment is doing. It's looking to put technicalities in place and undo an existing system that is working just fine. And will also lead to disparate treatment and confusion. Here are some examples. First of all, it says that, as I indicated earlier, this two-year historical period or the current year. But it also says you'll go back beyond that period of time in certain situations. So that will allow the Department of Finance to do whatever it really wants to do here. If it wants to go back six years, it will. If it doesn't, it won't. It also says that you'll only correct purely ministerial errors. What does that mean? It also says that it will only resolve issues if it's resolved by reference to documents on the website of Department of Finance. As a speaker earlier just said, that makes no sense. What if you need to look at, at a certificate of occupancy from the Department of Buildings? Will that be precluded? It also says it will not involve discretionary acts. What does that mean? It also says it will not involve interpretations of law, regulation, or policy. What does that mean? Everything requires a focus on the law. You need to look at possibly section eighteen oh two of the Real Property Tax Law. It's a taxless one, two, three, or four. That's out. In short, you're ignoring, you're ignoring state law, which, which thi- this regulation is, is serving to eliminate a fair and equitable system. The proposed rule is just going to serve to restore confusion that existed, frankly, before the Better World decision was enacted and before the clerical error rule was enacted. I respectfully request that you, just one more second, that you do not proceed, slow down, schedule some interactive meetings with the public and real estate professionals, and get some feedback before you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is, uh, oh, Alexis Turner, I already had you. Sorry, I had you twice. Warren M. Dubinsky?
Yes.
Are you present here?
Yes, present.
Are you representing any, anyone in particular?
Uh, the firm of Herman Katz and we, uh, the law firm of Herman Katz and, uh, you know, we have multiple clients who, who have properties with issues before the tax mission and law department and Department of Finance.
Great. The floor is yours. Remember about three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon. Um, my name is Warren Dubinsky, a partner at the firm of Herman Katz. Our firm focuses on real property tax issues, and I have personally worked on N Y C matters for more than a decade. I also currently serve as the chair of the Condemnation and Tax Searchiary Committee of the New York City Bar Association. However, my comments and the letter I submitted are being, uh, are, are being submitted in my personal capacity. Uh, I think while other speakers and colleagues of mine have raised, uh, many, uh, good, well-founded points. Um, I want to focus on two major flaws that I see with this, uh, these proposed rules. The first is, uh, what I believe, uh, in effect, may become a constructive denial of a tax commission. Uh, a, a, a tax commission application and hearing by the way these rules are written. Uh, in section five, uh, of the proposed rules, the, uh, Department of Finance, uh, would, would modify the rules to state that, uh, an error would not be corrected if the owner or other qualified filer received a determination, uh, pursuant, uh, to, uh, trip twenty-one of the rules, uh, of the city of New York. Uh, section four dash oh one subsection A, subsection three and four. Those rules specifically state that one of those determinations is a determination from the tax commission stating that they're going to take no action or confirming the assessment that is in place. So what you're basically saying is, okay, if you go to the tax commission, you can't get relief. You are then foreclosed from receiving any relief from finance in its review of the matter. This is especially frustrating because many of the errors that are, uh, the ones that need to be addressed by finance, uh, whether it's square footage, whether it's the number of residential units, um, whether it's tax class, are ones that, when you actually take a tax commission hearing, are ones that the tax commission will specifically decline to address and say, okay, well, finance will take care of it. What you've done now in the fact is say, okay, you can't go to the, uh, tax commission. Uh, you have to go to finance and in effect, uh, our clients are the ones who lose out and have to wait for the redress of their assessment issues. Um, I want to remind, uh, the Department of Finance and the proposer of these rules that a taxpayer's right to the review of their assessment is enshrined throughout New York law. Um, section, article sixteen, uh, section two of the New York State Constitution states that the legislature shall provide for the supervision, the review, and equalization of assessments for the purposes of taxation. The legislature has codified this constitutional right in the New York Real Property Tax Law as well as the relevant chapters of the New York City Charter. Um, the attempt to foreclose through this administrative rule process, the ability of a taxpayer to either seek corrective errors or seek relief at the tax commission is, I believe, unconstitutional. Second point I want to briefly raise is the qualified filer limitation. It says that it can only be an owner or other qualified tax commission filer. What that leaves out is somebody who buys property.
As you're over time.
It is trying to resolve an issue in a back year when they weren't an owner or qualified filer, but are now and are affected by a action and continuing error by the Department of Finance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is Douglas Lane present?
Uh, yes. How are you?
Good. Are you representing anyone today? Anyone in particular?
Uh, no, I'm speaking, um, in my capacity as government affairs liaison officer at Tenor Consulting.
Great. Thank you. As a reminder, about three minutes. The floor is yours.
Very good. Good afternoon. My name is Douglas Lane, and as I just said, I am the government affairs liaison at Tenor Consulting Services. I want to talk about my concerns about the proposed rule changes to the request for review and clerical error correction process, but I want to do it from the vantage point of my experience as Department of Finance Chief Review Assessor from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-eight. During my tenure as Chief Review Assessor, D O F did not have a well-developed set of rules governing what constituted a clerical error or an error of description. I thought the two thousand and sixteen rules that are currently in place, detailing a total of sixteen specific situations that were either a clerical error or an error of description was a significant improvement that brought clarity about just what a clerical error was to the taxpayer and clear guidance for the Department of Finance personnel tasked with reviewing clerical error applications. I would like to provide just one example to show the importance of clear rules governing clerical error corrections. In this particular case, a commercial building in its third year of construction had not been completed by April fifteenth. And as such, it should have been reduced to land. This is an error expressly covered by fifty-three oh two B five and was resolved fairly quickly with records from the Buildings Department. Under the proposed rules, it is not at all clear that the error described above could even be considered a clerical error since the building could have, in the assess's judgment, looked complete. And the language in fifty-three oh two, the proposed fifty-three oh two states, a clerical error or an error of description does not include an act based in whole or in part on an individual's example. Which would mean that this simplest of error correction cases would not be addressed. Additionally, because the clerical error correction was processed after the final assessment role was released, the subsequent tentative assessment was processed, the process, the prior year's new building increase as an equalization increase. As a result, the taxable assessment, which was the year for computing the I cap abatement based on the property, was fifty percent lower than it should have been. This error was also addressed and corrected through the clerical error process. Um, and it was, this error was covered in two places of section fifty-three oh two B. I am concerned that repealing this rule, repealing the clear present, clear rules, uh, are going to bring great unclarity. In, in closing, and I know I'm close to my time, I cannot over emphasize the importance for both taxpayers and for finance personnel of having a clear set of criteria to determine what is and what is not a clerical error. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next is a Eric Zaraton present? Eric Zaraton?
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon. Are you representing anyone in particular today?
Yes, uh, I, I'm with the law firm of Goldberg, Weapon, Finkel, Goldstein, and we represent, um, real property owners. We are a tax searchiary firm. We represent hundreds of property owners in the city of New York. And we file literally thousands of tax certs each year for those property owners. Um.
Great. As a reminder, about three minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you. One of the items that I find troubling about the proposed amendments to the rule is that the proposed amendments seem to overlook the real purpose of arriving at a fair and realistic value for real estate. Okay? Finance has a duty to come up with a fair and reasonable value for real property. And sometimes they get it right, sometimes they get it wrong. By enacting this proposed rule, you are going to prohibit property owners from correcting errors in description when finance gets it wrong. Um, it's troubling. It's very troubling that finance wants to only look at their own records. And some of my colleagues have said this already, uh, they don't want to view building department records or other records which might be able to correct an error in the description of the property. This is also circular in that if they're only looking at their own records and their records are wrong, then clearly you cannot get a correction of that error. Uh, the other problem that I find with the proposed amendment is its limitation on taxpayers remedies. Uh, and what I mean by that is, as some of my predecessors have said already, by enacting the proposed amendment, the Department of Finance would make a taxpayer essentially choose to either proceed with a tax commission hearing or proceed with the C E R R F R process. I don't not, I do not think that that was the intent of the legislature. Um, and I think that the Department of Finance is essentially forcing taxpayers through this proposed amendment to move all matters to Article seven proceedings. Or Article seventy-eight, excuse me, Article seven or Article seventy-eight proceedings. Um, and therefore forego their tax commission, uh, hearing. So I find that troubling as well. And then, uh, I think my third point on the matter is that the proposed amendment does not address, uh, key elements relating to the timing. Okay? So as one of the other speakers had said before, eh, there's no grandfather clause in the proposed amendment. Uh, if the proposed amendment goes through as it is currently written, it will have the effect of finance essentially getting a windfall because they will be able to foreclose prior, uh, C E R applications that were properly filed that they have not yet made determinations on. Uh, so that's one problem. The other problem that is just a, a problem with the C E R process in general is that there is no timeframe certain within which a taxpayer can expect to get a determination from the Department of Finance. We have had cases where we get
I just asked that you wrap up as you are over time.
Thank you. Um, I, I will wrap up on that then. Uh, thank you very much. I just hope that finance considers all the comments and takes a second look at the proposed legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Thank you very much for your comment. Next is a Todd Camerman present?
Yes.
And Todd, you've, uh, joined us by phone, it looks like?
Uh, I'm joined on, no, I'm joined on the, on the-
Oh, I see, you know, thank you.
Someone I- How are you? I'm, I'm here with, uh, the law firm of Goldberg and Boker. Um, I, I think it's important to remember that the CER is, um, was enacted under the department, uh, under, um, uh, Administrative Code eleven-two-oh-six. And it's, and it's important to, um, consider what, what eleven-two-oh-six is all about. And the, um, the appellate division, the second department in the Better World case before the enactment of the original CER, um, uh, discussed this. And okay, this is a decision that came down in two thousand fourteen. And in that decision, the appellate division rejected three main arguments that the Department of Finance had made at the time. It rejected the argument that clerical error review was limited to errors of near form, which sounds like ministerial errors that is now being put forth in the, in the, uh, present proposal. It rejected the argument that the legislative history of eleven-two-oh-six indicates that clerical error and errant descriptions should be narrowly construed. And it also rejected the argument that RPTL Article seven is the exclusive method to challenge misclassification. In fact, the appellate division said such, such a position would render eleven-two-oh-six superfluous and meaningless. But that was in two thousand fourteen. Two thousand sixteen, uh, the Department of Finance enacted the CER and as, um, and seemingly it accepted the appellate division's rulings as law on eleven-two-oh-six. It defi, it contained, it said in its, in, in its statement of basis and pers, and purpose that the definition of clerical errors and errant description should not be narrowly construed. It included a broad category of errors, including misclassification. And it said that, uh, uh, corrections under the clerical error rule are separate and apart from an appeal to the tax commission, meaning RPTL Article seven. Uh, and finally, um, there, there was a dissent in, in Better World and Justice Balkin's main problem was that it, it was not clear what a clerical error or errant description is or was. And, um, she, so when the CER, uh, came out and had all these definitions of what a clerical error is and what an error description is, it addressed, uh, both the majority and the, uh, uh, distance, uh, opinions. So, um, this, this proposal is a, uh, really undoes all of that. Since what the appellate division spoke on is, is really the only recent case on that, that, that really is an in-depth opinion about what eleven-two-oh-six is. This, this proposal violates the law. And, uh, and it, it, it also loses sight of the DOF's mandate to be fair, equitable and, and consistent. And, um, as my colleague said earlier about what the Court of Appeal says, which Better World quotes in Garth versus Board of, uh, Assessment Review for Town of Richmond, that the law regarding real property assessment proceedings is remedial in character and should be liberally construed, to the end that the taxpayer's right to have his assessment reviewed should not be defeated by a technicality. That is the law, that it's the pronouncement of the Court of Appeals. And this, uh, proposal, uh, guts all of that. It violates-
I just asked that you wrap as you are over time.
Thank you. And I, I would, I would urge the, uh, the Department of Finance to reconsider, uh, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. That completes our list of those who've requested. The only one who did not appear was a Yuri Galick. Are you present? And like to speak? Yuri Galick? I will now open the floor for those who did not register to speak but would like to. First, it looks like there's two people who have joined by phone. Would either of you like to speak today? Okay. Is there's anyone who would like to speak but has not yet spoken, please unmute your mic? And let me know that you would like to speak. If anyone has unmuted, they, we cannot hear you at this time. Okay, so we will continue until one PM to give anyone the opportunity who wishes to speak, uh, that chance. Every few minutes, I will reiterate and open the floor again and check if Yuri Galick has joined. Thank you all. If there is anyone who wishes to speak but has not spoken, please unmute your mic and let us know. Otherwise, we will continue until one PM. Has Yuri Galick joined and wished to speak? If so, please unmute your mic. And if anyone wishes to speak but has not done so, please unmute your mic. Okay, we will continue until one PM. As stated, if anyone would like to speak, please unmute your mic and let us know. If anyone would like to speak and has not done so, please unmute your mic. Thank you. Anyone wishes to speak and has not done so, please unmute your mic and let us know. Thank you. Once again, if anyone would like to speak and has not done so, please unmute your mic and let us know. Thank you. Just about 10 minutes left. If there's anyone who wishes to speak who has not yet done so, please unmute your mic and let us know. Thank you. Once again, if anyone would like to speak but who has not yet spoken, please unmute your mic and let us know. Thank you. With just five minutes left, if there is anyone who wishes to speak but who has not yet spoken, please let us know by unmuting your mic and then introducing yourself. Thank you. Once again, if there's anyone who wishes to speak but who has not yet spoken, please unmute your mic and let us know. I'm just confirming, Yuri Galick is not present. You have registered to speak but have not yet spoken. This will be the final call. If anyone wishes to speak but has not yet spoken, please unmute your mic and let us know. Okay. The time is now 1:00 PM on Friday, November 22nd, 2024. The hearing is officially concluded. Thanks all for their comments on this rule and hope everyone has a great day and a great weekend. Thank you very much.